I don't have anything either.
No, she was telling us about Bobby's.
Yeah, I just printed it this afternoon.
Oh, okay, thanks.
I'll start sending it now that I have it.
So what's his calendar?
I'll do my.
I'm sure they're very worried you don't want to make anything I could afford. Even on a contingency basis.
Uh, is this sewer fund stuff? Bert Lake money there too?
No.
That's why. Oh. Where's that? Oh, okay, there it is. So we have a, a, a Bert Lake.
We were told we should say.
Of course, we got told that.
Let's call a meeting order, will you try? Pledge of lead.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's actually play ball already now. Event. Uh, Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday. Okay. Little call please.
Kramer.
Here.
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 Here. Here.
Minutes of the March meetings, and we have two special meetings, if you get a chance to look at these. Any changes? Dispense the minutes as. And. Dispense the March meeting minutes and special meeting, any, we have two special meetings there. Any changes to those? We will dispense those as written. The agenda. We did add, and it's different than up there. And we are so old school here. Uh, number nineteen will be ARPA premium pay. Number twenty will be approval for congressional earmark. Twenty-one will be board approval to proceed to circuit court. For the caravan. Can we, uh, amend number twenty to include West Side polls and sewer plant? West Side and sewer plant, okay, I was gonna just scratch the, uh, polls, but the sewer plant. Okay. And sewer, okay, so the, uh, twenty would be approval to apply for congressional earmark. Very West Side polls and the sewer plant. Right.
Motion to accept the agenda with.
If Bobby makes that motion, is there support?
What's the word?
Jan supports, all in favor?
Aye.
Public comments on the agenda items, is there any public comment on agenda items? Okay, we'll go along, correspondence, do we have another? I wanted to direct your attention to the correspondence up there, I'm gonna give the link to Bob. It's, they're ta- taking out the old on a way, replacing that. And there's a place for public comment, you can go keep up on the details. Uh, when they're gonna start, how long it's gonna be closed, but right now, none of that's up there, they're just a place for public comment. And you have something else?
We have the library. What was it like, chambers? Chamber job fair.
I'll put that, I'll put that under latest news and public notices. Okay, okay. Saturday, April ninth, ten to three, the Cross in the Woods, the Job Fair, hosted by the Indian River Chamber of Commerce. Blue beans. Okay. Any more correspondence? Treasurers report, any bills?
Okay, I gave you guys a new report, so what you got, normally I give you that total that's on the back page. So this breaks out the banks, so you can see each one of these are the different bank accounts that we hold. The pool general, those are the funds within that bank account. So you see the beginning balance, debits, credits, and then the ending balance with the total that I give you on the back page, three million, two hundred twenty-eight thousand, four hundred forty-six dollars and fourteen cents are in the general, and then the tax is a hundred thousand, three sixty-four and thirty-five cents.
Thank you.
Um, this is another little update, is I'm almost through reconciliations with BSNA, I spent time on the phone with them this week, and, um, Nora.
Can you hear in the back? Can you hear in the back?
Yes.
Okay, some people can, some can.
Okay, we can turn this on.
Give it. Hey, bring it closer to you.
Okay.
There you go.
Nora, who is the accounting whiz at BSNA, has gone through, um, everything, and she's down to just a couple things her and I have to work out, and then we'll be back to balancing, I also, on March thirty-first, consolidated the two general accounts, um, that's where you see that pool. And so now there's just one account which should resolve those, um, transfer issues that were causing the balancing problems that we were having, so, um, that's all done, so I anticipate things will go smoother with that going forward, so I'm happy about that.
So we're gonna get one of these every month now?
You are.
Wonderful, this is, this is very helpful.
Yes.
Okay, so. The total, I'm, I'm not very smart when it comes to finance. Hit your, hit your button. Uh, so, like, where it says general fund, that total debit is the same as the ending balance, what?
In's and out, so a lot of that, we, the money goes out, it's what, the.
So we started with five hundred thirty-eight thousand and, and?
No, okay, Dawn, see, this is why this report. So, I can tell you why, actually, I know why. Um, cause this is the pooled money, so I did not, we closed the general IMA and the general checking, so next month, these begin, this ending balance will be the beginning balance.
Okay, that's what I thought.
None of these funds had anything in them when we started, that's why.
Okay, so the library fund, for example, it started with twenty-five, seven oh one, and?
It, actually, it started with two, two seventy-four, that, those debits are what I moved into this when I consolidated the funds. So the total debits in that pooled money is your starting balance.
Yeah, so this is all. Yeah, it'll all look different.
Yeah, that part will look different, everything else is. But that's just cause that's when I pooled it.
Okay, so it could, just because I'm supposed to know something about sewers and I really don't.
Mm-hmm.
So, five ninety is, uh, the fund that everybody talks about.
Right, so you see three different ones.
And then our RRI is, is that like our reserve?
That's the reserve, sewer at REU, uh, that's the State Park money.
Yeah, back up a little bit, where it says RRI, wh- what do we normally use that money for?
Um, there are.
Repair, replace it.
There are certain expenses, we can move that into the general, at the, so generally what we do at the end of a budget year. If we incurred expenses that we can use that towards, then we'll do a journal entry.
So, so does the money for that?
Then I would physically move that money, yes, out of there into the five ninety under pooled. And we'll have to do that, cause you see how that's getting low, four thousand six hundred eleven dollars and five cents.
Oh, okay.
Under pooled, so we will move money per our plan, some will come out of the State Park fund, some will come out of the RRI, and that fund will replenish for next year.
So when people pay their quarterly O and M?
Mm-hmm.
Where does that go?
That's going into that five ninety under pooled.
The seventy-four nine?
Nope, four, four thousand six hundred eleven. RRI is only, the only money that goes into that is the adjustment that the assessor or the auditor has to take.
I'm sorry, which line now, I'm missing.
Pooled.
Where it says pooled general all.
Pooled, yeah. Sewer in there.
In the middle, in the middle.
That's our working, can you point it to me?
Where's in regards to sewer at REU?
Go up.
It says library.
Yep, go up again.
Oh, okay.
One more time, so that's our working sewer fund, that's where we pay bills from, that's where we collect O and M. The other two are only touched under auditor.
So, so where do we, where do we pay meeting, huh, now that?
That, same line, every, that's our working line.
Okay.
Those other two don't get touched.
Are they in a bank account somewhere?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, these are the bank accounts, so these are.
So, if you look at, when you look at the quarterly budget, there is a five nine oh cost center.
And?
That's where.
What lucky bank gets our business?
Citizens and Awaken.
We get, and who?
Awaken.
What are the savings or?
Um, we have two, three checkings, three of these have checkings attached, all the rest are savings now.
So if we're lucky, we get a quarter of a percentage.
Yep.
Okay.
Alright, that's all I got.
Okay, bills, question about the bills?
So you, I had to give you guys an updated, um, uh, invoice register, and the reason for the updated invoice registers is because, um, after Bobby pooled the fund, I had to go back and update every, edit every single invoice that I had put in since last month to pull from the right checking account. So, uh, we couldn't ban up this morning, and I ran a new, uh, a new one for you.
Okay, any questions about that?
Motion to pay bills?
And accept the treasurer's report.
I can accept the treasurer's report.
There's, Bobby, Bobby makes a motion, is there support? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay. Police report, chief?
So, good news is, is we have acquired the two patrol cars. I've got, uh, verification that there are patrol cars when they come in at June. Um, I got ahold of Mark Wilk, he's the guy that does the outfitting of our patrol cars, he's already came down, we went through step by step, what, how we want our vehicles set up, all the materials that he needed have been ordered, so they're gonna, all the materials should be here before June, so there's no delay. So, as soon as they get in here, they're gonna go to St. Agnes, they'll get outfitted and then back to us. Um, it was a little cheaper than what I anticipated, uh, per vehicle to outfit them was ten thousand eight hundred eleven dollars. Um, that does not include decals, cause we have our decal done here. But it was, uh, about twelve hundred dollars less than what I originally anticipated. Um, we had discussed at the special meeting, um, about how we're gonna pay for them, whether it be ARPA funds or my fund balance, I was kinda hoping to hear a little conversation on that tonight. Um, but other than that, that's all I have, cause I see I'm actually on the agenda further down, so.
So we did, at the special meeting, we had discussed using ARPA funds to purchase, instead of getting into the fund balance, we talked about using the ARPA funds to, uh, purchase the, uh, vehicles. That came up, so that would be a good conversation. You're solid right now in your fund balance, correct, chief?
Uh, yes, currently five hundred and seventy-five thousand.
And what, what does the aud- auditor say you should have in there?
Uh, he said approximately half, which was about seventy-five thousand over right now.
Okay.
And that fund balance, mind you, it's not just money sitting around.
I know.
That money is what gets me through from July one to December when we start collecting taxes.
From tax billing to tax billing.
Correct, cause we only, we only bill for taxes for the police department one time a year.
So, we had talked about taking the ARPA funds and purchasing the vehicles, which we can do, Bobby brought it up at the last meeting and, uh. Hundred percent, right? Hundred percent. Because you, you can't use ARPA money for pensions. Nope. But you can use it for co- uh, for cars. Correct. And it just so happens if you have money left over, in the police fund, you could pay down some of that damn pension liability. Or other things. But I have a question about that, since you're talking about ARPA. What do you think it's gonna cost to fix the building, the heat and the sweat? We're gonna go through one at a time, Doug and I have been talking quite a bit, chief and I have talked, I've talked with, uh, Kelsey from the, from the library. We've talked quite a bit about different things in the building, I think it's a, to me, the bu- building, I think it's tired, it needs a lot of, and. I'll, I'll say what I said last time, people shouldn't have, you have to work in this, you have to work in this, you have to work in this, all these people have to work in this, it's we, we, we should do everything we can to fix it, you shouldn't have to sit in here and sweat to death or freeze to death.
Well, we're opening windows right now.
Opening windows, and there's no heat on you, Chris.
And the heat's, it's something.
What did you say?
We're cold in the library.
Maybe that's the problem, I don't know, we need to fix it.
So it all went there.
I don't get it.
Yeah, that's basically, well, it all went over here, and now we're cold.
So when are we gonna know what it costs, really? Uh, we have to get to, Eminem has looked at the air handlers, we gotta get a bid on the fascia, there's several things, you know, we looked at lights for the parking lot. Didn't you mention like, two hundred thousand? Oh, no, not that much. By the time we do the air handlers, the fascia? Hmm, I don't think it'd be that much, do you know? You said something about a hundred and eighty or something one time? No, we, we spent a hundred and eighty on an update, about a hundred and eighty on the update for the heating HVAC system. And it just seems it's not gonna get any cheaper. Well, I, I would like to discuss the, the, the vehicles right now, is, is this something that, anyone looking at, chief, and? Well, the problem is, you know, I'd love to pay for his vehicle with ARPA money, but if you need that ARPA money to fix the building, it's all gotta be in the mix, right?
So I think we talked about once before, can we come up with a list and put money to the list of gotta haves and nice to haves?
Well, it's gonna.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause, cause Kelsey has her wish list tonight too, so, delivery. And let me ask Bobby a question, let me ask the treasurer a question. When you're moving money around, can we pay for his cars with a interest-free loan from the general fund until we decide what to do with the ARPA money?
I think we would take it from his fund balance.
Yeah, however you wanna do it.
Put it back, ARPA would allow that, that's what my concern would be.
And that gives, that gives Mike and Doug or whoever?
Cause we don't pay for anything right now. I think we're good to make a decision, if we make a list and make a decision, we don't have to pay anything at this point, I think Gordon just kinda wants to know for his.
Cause I'm really concerned about that, but I don't know what it costs.
Budgeting purposes.
And I would love to pay what, what we're talking about, so he could tell me we're not at that point yet?
Right.
So that would give us another month to figure out what it's gonna cost to fix the building? So, you want, you want bids for everything we've talked about in the building? I don't think we need bids as much as we need at least three, about two or three quotes. That's what I'm saying, cause we don't have, we don't have.
An idea of the cost, yeah.
Yeah. We talked about fascia, we talked about the, we sealed the parking lot, we talked about, I mean, there's, there's a ton of stuff, but I. You know, in another life.
We have to prioritize that stuff too.
Yeah. In, in another life, my requirement in another life was twenty-five thousand or less, two quotes. Twenty-five thousand or more, three quotes, fifty thousand or more, formal bids. I, I, I'm telling you part of the problem right now, and Doug will, we're having a hard enough time getting one person to bid on stuff. I got it, I got it. Anyway, how do we wanna handle the, when we're right along, how do we wanna handle the police cars, the vehicles? Aye. I mean, is there something, Bobby, you said that we can? She answered the question. Yeah. We can.
We can, we can take it out of my fund balance, and then if you guys decide to put X amount of dollars in of ARPA money, we can make that happen.
Put that back, yeah, that's what I think.
We can do that?
Yeah.
The thing to do is.
I promise we won't tell you, trust me, man.
You might end up with more money that way, I think if we make a decision right now without the rest of the list, we're gonna be conservative, and if we have the whole list, then we know what there is.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, we can prioritize and.
So can you table it?
Did they give you an ETA, did they tell you when, did they say first of June, end of June?
We're looking at the middle of June.
Middle of June?
Oh, we got plenty.
Tell me you have some time.
Okay.
Yeah, so we can.
We'll, we'll table that then.
Yeah.
Thanks, Bobby. So that means that May, we're gonna have, uh, everybody's gonna bring their wish list in for ARPA money, okay, with ideas? Well, I think you're gonna bring us some estimates.
It's, it's out of line, I think, I don't, but, we could make, can I make a motion about it, cause it kinda has to do with the police car we're talking about?
Yeah. Yeah.
So, what if you, Kelsey and Gordon sat down with those lists of kinda the three departments and the people involved in the building, put together a list, so we have some idea of prices, and then that's what comes to the next meeting, so we can kinda go, we've got two hundred thousand we wanna work with.
And are you including Doug?
Well, yeah, Doug and Mike.
I was gonna.
He's hiding that bag.
Yeah, he's hiding in the corner.
You brought it up, since, since we're mentioning that, the cemetery qualifies for ARPA money.
Yes, it does.
So, Doug could, could put that on the list, just, just ban it.
It was in the MTA area.
So the four people that get together, Mike, Doug.
Okay. Kelsey and, and chief.
Chief.
Okay. We'll have a meeting and, uh, talk about what we're gonna do, that's your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay. I see. And, Bob, is it all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Reporting estimates to the meeting. Yep. Well, right, and we'll, we'll get going on them, we have, we're starting to get ideas. Reports, DDA, uh, that, that, uh, nothing really to report on DDA. We're gonna talk about that later. All sorts. We are, we're gonna getting the, we've got bids for the, uh, streetlights out, and my, I've talked to, I don't know, I, I can't remember if we talked about this last meeting, cause I had a DDA meeting, we had talked about it then, but we're getting a survey and trying to acquire the right-of-way down by the fish to put, uh, that's basically building, it's not the dark spot. Uh, dark spot is, that's the lights, we already discussed that one as well. And, working with Will, we're going to reboot the whole EV, electric vehicle charger thing, starting from the DDA, so that, that's gonna be our, we'll start over on that. So that's. So you did get a bid on the dark part? Yep. And it was? Uh, too much, fifty, fifty thousand, fifty-one thousand. What do you mean too much? Cause I've got a, I just, just the poles, this was fi- he put in five poles, and I think he just misunderstood it, and then I got standard electric, this is Zimmerman, who originally did the, 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 uh, project. His, his was five poles and lights and all the work, except for, uh, except for fixing the concrete, was fifty-one thousand, and then I got a bid on four lights on the road and two lights out here, and it was like twenty-seven thousand, but that's not labor. So I have to go reboot that, you know. So you think we'll be able to get it lit by summer? Uh, I don't, I don't know. If I just pull the trigger and say Zimmerman's, you know, just come do it, that's all part of the DDA project, the streetscape. Well, the DDA has their own rules on biz, that's right. Correct. That's not my business. I'd just take a seat, go another year without. Oh, no, I, I'm pretty sure it's gonna get fixed this year. How about concrete? Doug, did you ever hear back in the alley guy about the concrete?
I haven't gotten any good, they were supposed to go to the county this weekend, and I haven't heard from either one.
When you, when you do concrete, are you gonna include the park docks? Yes. 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 Alright, nice. And we've walked that project with, how many Masons, three? We've had three, three different, uh, contractors walk the project but never get back to us.
Yeah.
Um, okay, that's DDA, uh, Parks Commission, Doug, anything?
Not really.
Uh, so I, I have some questions, um, are you taking that tree down out there?
Gave him the go-ahead, waiting for him to do it.
Who's that?
Josh View.
Who?
Josh.
You're talking about the one at the?
At the docks?
At the docks, yes.
Awesome, you're awesome, and how about the, the sculpture?
I haven't, haven't heard anything.
He said he was gonna, last time I talked to him, he said, Mr. Hindman said he'd have it ready about, I wanted to say Memorial Day to mid-June, somewhere in there. Are, are we running into a problem with the state, cause, or do we get an extension? No, we're, I've talked to Mike, we have to, that's something I have to work on with Laura, I was working on that with, uh, Summer. Cause, as I recall, they were gonna give us an extension because of COVID? Yeah, we're all set, I mean, we're, you know. I just don't wanna lose that much. Yeah. We're under budget, right? We under budget?
Yeah.
Okay, so far, but you're tracking your time, right? You already track your time?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we plan it?
Under, we're waiting on.
Okay, great. Okay, uh, Park Commission, or anything else, Doug?
Not really, but Field Six is gonna, as soon as the weather breaks, it's gonna get finished up in a hurry, but you gotta wait for the weather.
Okay, thank you, Planning Commission, John?
Review of last week, our last month's report, which is about the same.
Okay.
End of, uh, this month, probably will have a first get-together regarding the, uh, formulation of the, of the new, uh, plan for the, uh, the whole area, and you have some information?
Yeah, I'll do that, Mike, I'll come to that, yes.
Alright, so you were gonna talk about Mike first and then Kai?
I, that was Mike, was gonna, Mike Sherman, he was gonna talk about that. Is Mike here? Nope.
He's not here, man.
Have, have you looked at any of this RRCR? I have not. Or are you going to? I talked to Mike about it. I sent it. Yeah, I know you did, yeah, yeah, I talked to Mike and I explained, and I was, I was gonna, I'll speak more with John about it, I'll explain it tonight. Okay, cause that's all their daily work, right? Yep. No, it's, it's, it's DDA, it's the board, it's the county, it's the, the, the public, yep.
I, um, needed to do a bud- sorry, I needed to ask for a budget adjustment for, um, legal fees. We need to move two thousand dollars out of contingencies, the GL is one oh one, two oh nine, nine four one zero zero, into attorney legal, GL one oh one, two six six, eight oh one, zero zero.
This is for?
We're short, and there's.
Okay.
So, it's because of.
For what?
Legal fees.
Yeah.
Too much sending stuff to attorneys, we're over budget.
The attorney get, knows we're over budget.
Well, a lot of that is light and sewer. And, uh, I, I looked at that list again today, and it's gonna get nasty.
Well, we're.
There, there's a whole list of legal stuff he's gotta do before we even accept the law.
So we're short twelve hundred and eight dollars, and I wanna move two thousand, I think maybe you'll get us to.
Yeah, you might wanna move even more, cause we're going to court here twice just on the light. And then, uh, the sewer stuff's gonna happen.
Is that where it's like?
You're talking about right-of-way opinions and all, oh, boy. Okay. Mike knows, you've been through this before. Three thousand, she's, she's moving money, three thousand. Now, we'll eventually get that back out of the sewer plant.
So I'm gonna make a, yeah, so I'm gonna make a motion that we move three thousand from contingencies to attorney legal.
I'll second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there anything else about planning?
No.
Nothing. Cemetery.
You're not here.
Okay. All right. I, I wanna discuss cemetery, no, Mike. Yeah. I had a tree guy over today. These guys are booked, and we need to kinda start some basic, looking into fixing that cemetery.
Yeah, she can't get things.
Doug could, Doug could do that for us, he's got all the contacts.
Oak hill, you're not gonna do anything in there now again until fall. Because of oak wilt.
Because of what?
Oak wilt.
Oak wilt.
You cannot trim an oak tree during the months that they are budded or lean. You have to wait for them to go dormant, or if oak wilt gets into one tree in there, every one of them will be dead within five years.
No trimming?
No trimming, nothing.
What about cleanup?
We're gonna go in and clean it up, but as far as tree service.
Yeah, but you don't have the people to ma- do a major cleanup.
Gets done every spring, every fall.
Okay. Okay, I just offered, thank you. Okay, thank you. Uh, Library Report.
Okay.
Thank you, Kelsey.
Yes, so. Okay, I'll do the short race and then add my wish list, I'll just give it to you guys to look at. So, um, spring at the library, although it doesn't really feel like it. Uh, we have Books for Bulldogs next Tuesday, April twelfth, from five to six, um, we'll be doing a fun spring craft with the kids, and a story or two read by an Inland Lakes school teacher. The event's open to everyone, whether or not your kid actually attends Inland Lakes. Um, this month is also National Guitar Month, so we're leaning into our musical skills, um, on what day, on Wednesday, April thirteenth, so the day after Books for Bulldogs, we're doing a hobby hangout class where we'll teach people how to use this free music-making app on your phone, tablet, and your computer, and you can make entire songs on these, this little free app, it's called GarageBand. So we'll be doing a demonstration for that, and, um, we'll just, I mean, it'll be fun, it'll be interactive. And then we're also on a, Friday, April twenty-second, at one PM, we're doing a ninety-minute musical program with Troy Graham, who is a singer-songwriter, poet, and children's entertainer from Marquette, um, and he's coming down here to do a little concert, and then to teach everyone how to write their own songs, so, that'll be something fun too. Um, and that's pretty much it, and then I have a little laundry list for you guys, so I'll pass that out.
Just the things that the library has discussed about requesting for the building?
Yep.
Okay.
Some of them are more joint items, and then other ones are more like just.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Kelsey. Yes?
So, Kelsey, Jim stabbed me, um, this afternoon, we just chatted out in the hall, and, um.
We've noticed that, that the traffic has picked up.
Yes.
Significantly, is there like a report that you can give us to show us where you were a year ago, um?
Oh, yeah, I do that every month for my board, where I do twenty nineteen numbers, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and now I'm into twenty twenty-two, I do four years of comparisons. So I can just give you guys a couple of those from the past. I do four years of comparison, so I can just give you guys a couple of those from the past.
That would be good if you brought it in here, just because it's something we can see.
Yeah, yeah, it was to compare, for them even, it was to compare COVID numbers.
Yeah.
So, um, luckily, we are kinda like, we're just reaching back to those pre-COVID numbers now, so finally my numbers are looking really good.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll give those to you guys for sure.
Okay, thanks. Sewer Report, Robert?
Uh, nothing further on what I already said.
What's that?
Um, sorry, but Don actually reminded me something, we're transferring the money. Is there a way that I can transfer money from my contingency fund to my transportation? Because my fuel budget is just about shot and I'm thinking I'm like about three hundred dollars left in there right now.
But his contingency is not like our contingency, right? He doesn't have, I think it's in the cost center, right?
It's in a, it's in a, it's on, yeah, it's on its own cost.
Yeah, just tell me what it is.
And it's not a capital expense, and it's not a personal, personal expense.
So.
Yeah, just.
I don't need board approval then to just go ahead and have that moved then?
As long as it's not capital first.
Okay.
Right, so our contingency is a contingency outline of loan, yours, yours is in the cost center.
Okay, well, I was, after we got the last fuel bill, I'm like, man, if I don't, I'm not gonna mail them back next month, so. Alright, this one, make sure it's right there.
Bicycles in their future, I can see it now.
Walking patrols, but nice.
Been pushing that. Sewer Report, Robert?
Nothing further than what I already sent the board in my phone lines.
R, RU, criteria sheet, we're looking at the number sixteen, it's called doctor office, and, um, by that criteria, OMH would have two RU's. But we need to change this, cause they have, I think, roughly six. So we're changing it to, um, the adjustment would be from doctor to doctor, physician's assistant, and there's practitioner.
Correct.
So it'd be NP, PA, or DR.
I made that motion.
Okay, so that would be.
My second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Somebody's ringing. Special Assessment Resolution One, congratulations to the Sewer Committee Insurer. You did it, you got sixty, what, sixty-four point six percent, something like that, almost sixty-five percent.
With more coming.
More coming.
And the important news is, if you were to strip, do it the other method, it's sixty percent.
The other method means by percent, yeah, property owner.
Oh, by people, by property owners, yeah, okay. Uh, okay, uh. This is Special Assessment Resolution Number One, as required by law. It's Residential Sewer Phase One, Special Assessment District. And, uh, Minister of the Regular Meeting of the Township Board of the Township of Tuscorora County, Sheboygan State of Michigan, held in the township on April fifth, two thousand twenty-two, at seven PM Eastern Daylight Time, uh, time present, members, we'll put that down, absent, um, none. But following preamble and resolutions were offered by member.
Kramer.
Kramer, and supported by member.
Vance.
Vance. Whereas the Township Board of the Township of Tuscorora County, Sheboygan State of Michigan pursuant to Act one eighty-eight, Public Acts of Michigan, nineteen fifty-four, as amended, tentatively declares its intent to proceed with public improvements and described in Exhibit A, attached hereto, and made a part of hereof in the Special Assessment District, tentatively described in Exhibit B and attached hereto, and made a part hereof, and whereas the township has received petitions in support of the Special Assessment District requesting the public improvements signed by record owners of land constituting more than fifty percent of the total land area in said Special Assessment District, and whereas the Township Board has caused to be prepared plans showing certain public improvements and described in Exhibit A, the location thereof in the Special Assessment District, tentatively described in Exhibit B, and the estimated cost thereof, and whereas the same have been received by the Township Board and are on file with the Township Board, and whereas the Township Board desired, decides, desires to proceed with the proposed public improvements, now therefore be resolved that the preparations of plans by Performance Engineers Incorporated of Charleboy, Michigan, showing the improvements, the location thereof, and estimates of the cost thereof is hereby approved. Two, the Township Board tentatively declares its intentions to make public improvements described in Exhibit A. The Township Board hereby tentatively does, designates as the Special Assessment District against which all or part of the cost of said public improvements is to be assessed as lots and parcels of land, more particularly described in Exhibit B. Four, the Township Board shall meet at the Township Office on, I think you mean Township Hall, offices on Tuesday, May tenth, two thousand twenty-two, at six PM Eastern Daylight Time, in which time and place the Township Board shall hear objections to petition and proposed public improvement and the Special Assessment District therefore, thereof. Therefore, the Township Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of such hearing to be published twice prior to said hearing in the Straitsland Resort a newspaper of general circulation in the township, the first publication to be at least ten days before the time of hearing, and shall cause notice of said hearing to be mailed by first-class mail to all record owners of or persons in interest in property in the Special Assessment District, as shown on the last Township Tax Assessment records of the township at less, least ten full days before the date of said hearing. Six, uh, said notice shall be substantially the form attached hereto as Exhibit C. All resolutions and parts of resolutions insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this Resolution B, and the same hereby are rescinded. Roll call.
Kramer.
Yes.
Love, you have, it's really.
Yes.
Plasma, yes. And?
Yes.
Resolution declared adopted.
Can I make a comment? I just wanna thank the board for, through this last five years, and the community for this. Exactly, it's. It's been pretty incredible, especially with the board support never wavered, including the past trustees. And, um, if you need help with the mailouts, cause they are expensive, you know, you can rip envelopes and and don't have to let nobody know. I, I sent, I sent to the printout, so.
It's been quite a learning curve.
When I, when I did talk, when I did talk, I did talk to Mr. Mann, uh, he said, uh, it's, the addresses should be based specifically on the tax bills, whatever that means. He told me that.
Yeah, Bob, it's been quite a learning curve, hasn't it?
Uh, I didn't know I was getting it.
The man never sleeps, am I saying that right now? He never sleeps.
I know, I got an email at two fifty AM.
AM.
Worse than I am.
Oh, oh.
Okay, fourteen, I wanna point out something, Airport Assistant Manager Chris Kinsvater, who served that, uh, airport for a number of years, I think at least twenty. He's resigned, he stepped down, he's got health issues, uh, he's done a wonderful job, he served as the assistant and then stepped up to be the airport manager for a number of years and then stepped down, back down to Andy Bowman took over, and he became the assistant manager. He has resigned, and I just wanted to point it out to our community, you had somebody who really threw himself into this job at the airport, and I want the uh, board to acknowledge that he is, and I will write him a letter thanking him for his, uh, years of service to the airport.
And that we accept the resolution with regret.
With regret, with regret. Okay, thank you. Um, reinvestment-ready community resolution? I wanna explain something about that, did you get a chance to look through your, your mail? I, I sent some information out. Uh, this, uh.
All the link.
Yeah, it is, but, uh.
Didn't you get a chance to really look at?
Okay, well, don't, I, I just wanna bring up some, we're going to engage with MEDC and become a reinvestment-ready community, and it will be a number of things. Looking at our zoning, looking at some of our, our, our best practices, and we're gonna try and tailor, and we're in the process now of doing our tenure plan, so it'll be a good time to do that. There are a lot of things that they ask you, uh, and there's, there's two, there's two levels, there's the essentials, and then there's the certified. We're looking at the essentials in order to become engaged with MEDC, I went through this, uh, class a few years ago, but we never became engaged. Now I see situations where there's grant money available, and there's also grant money, there may be grant money for us to do our tenure plan. So, uh, but it, it would, would it afford us, it would, I would, it would be, I mean, there's no cost to the township. All it is, we'll just go over, uh, I think there are six or eight different categories we'll look at. It's how to, how to communicate and collaborate with the community. We, there are situations now where I know, I do this every meeting, it's, it's a rumor. Uh, three situations right in town right now where somebody wants to develop. And this is the kinda thing that we're looking for, and wanna make sure that we have a grip on things as we move forward. So I'm just asking that we approve this resolution, you're not gonna make me read this over, I just got done with that long one.
Yeah, you just said it. You just said it.
I just said it. It is being resolved, we're, we're, the Board of Trustees is willing to participate in the MEDC redevelopment-ready communities program, including increased interaction and partnership with MEDC, their DDA, Planning Commission, Sheboygan County, and other stakeholders in the development review process. It is the intention of the Tuscorora Township Board of Trustees to utilize RRC best practices in evaluation process to improve our processes and communication. For stakeholders, the supervisor is hereby authorized to proceed toward implementation of the recommendations necessary to receive RRC certification from the MEDC.
I have a question.
Yes.
Talking about the grants that would be available, is there someone in this organization that we're going to partner with that is a grant writer?
Uh, besides me.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Oh, they definitely have.
Oh, yeah, I, 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 I was thinking about your DDA and stuff, I go, we, we need to.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, yeah, they do, they, they help you with the grants.
Grant writer, that would help us apply to it.
Well, it's their money, it's their, they're the grants.
We're gonna get certified so that people in the community would be the people to apply for the grants, the businesses.
And they have technical assistance for those people.
Okay, that would help them write the grants. So we'd be very proud.
Okay, that's, cause I know that's an issue of getting, you know, the proper grant writers in there, I just wanna make sure that that was, you know, covered.
So can I ask about the grants? With this four-point-seven billion-dollar infrastructure bill, I read that thing three times. There are so many grants to apply for, how are we gonna do all this? I mean, can NMCOT help us with this?
We won't though, right? Am I understanding this correctly? This.
Yeah, but the community.
This is MEDC.
The community would, so.
Yes.
Who can help with the grants, cause?
We're, we're not, I mean, we're not giving the grants.
It's gonna be up to the business owners, so they're gonna have people within their organization that are gonna know.
Can they go to NMCOT perhaps?
No, MEDC, they go to MEDC, protect, they give the, they give this, this is what the re, uh, the RRC is.
Yeah, I know.
We, we become engaged with them, somebody comes to town, they, they look at a situation they wanna redevelop, uh, and, and they say, the MEDC steps in and offers assistance. And it has to be based around our best practices, the zoning, uh, and I, I think we're real close, we've had.
Our tenure plan, all that kinda stuff. And unless we're certified as this, they can't apply for those grants, those aren't available to people in our community, businesses, so by, just, all we're doing is getting certified.
Correct.
To give more opportunity.
Is the Chamber involved in this at all?
Chamber can and has been talking about this since I got here, to be perfectly honest.
Yeah, but.
And there's organizations throughout the state, be it MEDC, NLEA, EDC, all those organizations that will help the businesses write the grants, apply for the funds, everything like that. I even had an information session last week, I had to apply for the four-hundred-nine million dollar pool that was available for businesses at Los Fons. It's what I do every single day I'm in my office.
So we just need to get certified, so that.
We're opening the door for these grants to be available.
The community has to go.
Hey, would, would this help for, with something like, uh, the bicycle program?
Bob, there's an endless list of things that would help with, in fact, it would have helped reimburse, uh, for the paint on the brass rail, if it was the program, if the community was already in, um, enrolled in the program, it would have had seventy-five percent of the cost of the paint reimbursed to its business. The addition that Tony put on the three-ten, she would have gotten seventy-five percent of those funds reimbursed. Any type of beautification project, improvement to your business, anything like that is covered, um, under this program, it can help with reimbursement funds. Most of the grants are reimbursements, but if you spend the money, they'll give you up to seventy-five percent back. It's an incredibly robust program, right now Roger City is basically printing money with it.
Do they, do they do loans to it, too?
Yep.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, make a motion.
Let's make a motion, let's do this. Make a motion to authorize signature for the participation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Hey, yeah, yeah.
Police contract.
Uh, police contract, police contract co- coming up for renewal. What is that expire sheet, do you know?
Uh, June thirty-first.
June thirty-first, we have to.
There is no June thirty-first.
June thirtieth?
June thirty.
Bobby, you've done this before?
I have done this before.
I'll, I'll go with you and do it.
Okay.
You guys. Okay.
Should we make a motion that you guys be our contract committee then?
Yes, yes, make that motion.
I make a motion that anybody but me be on the contract committee, no, uh, Mike and Bobby.
Okay, is there support? Jim, Don supports, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, McGraw-Morris Legal Contract, uh, we've had them as attorneys for tax tribunal. They've given us a heck of a rate at a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour for the last few years, they raised it to a hundred and fifty. It's still well below, uh, their standard rate, we get a municipal rate be- cause they have property in the township, so.
And we've been longstanding.
How's their track record?
Um, I think they do a great job, I mean, we did, I think we, we lost one, didn't we, or, no, we won, we won the one. But we, McGraw-Morris does a good job.
There, there's two, I think, there's two ideas and they're one of them.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'll make that motion.
Bob makes that motion, all, uh, support?
I support, yeah.
Jan supports, all in favor, aye. Okay, Top of Michigan. Help War Racing Club. Uh, the dates are up there, August thirteenth, August fourteenth, uh, from eleven AM to two PM, they want a waiver of the no-wake ordinance on the Indian River.
Make that motion.
Jan makes that motion, is there support? Bob supports, supports, all in favor? Okay, ARPA Premium Pay, you guys are great, this is wonderful.
Wait till next month.
You have to, you have to know us a curveball, yeah.
Um, ARPA, you, we have somebody.
Yeah, I put some, uh, put together a couple of spreadsheets. So we talked the last time about adding Todd.
Chaney.
Chaney, but I wouldn't want you guys, um, throw numbers out until I look at it. So, um, what I put together is, uh.
Who's Mr. Chaney?
He worked up until last. What's that, Doug?
Excuse me?
Did you say, when, when did he leave?
In November of twenty twenty, but he came back in June of twenty twenty-one for two months, May and June, I think it was.
Right, he worked with Jim on the Seawall project.
Right.
Oh, I remember him.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, he did hell with him.
So basically, look at.
Saved us a fortune, did.
If you look at the spreadsheet I've gotten, everybody, including the officers, Todd, and, um, it's at the bottom, uh, what their pay rate was, uh, how many hours they've worked, um, from March of twenty twenty through December of twenty twenty-one. And, um, and then what the premium pay was that we, uh, gave them. He's in the mix, um, if we, uh, wanted to give him the two thousand dollars.
So, so Mr. Chaney hadn't gotten two thousand dollars?
Not yet.
Yeah, that is, we talked about that last month and we said.
A dollar sixty-two is way over compared to everybody else.
Well.
He makes way, way less.
Yeah, that's why, so you have to look at the hours, the, the, the hours that they worked.
Well, so did Kathy Jewell, she only got seventy-four cents an hour.
No.
She didn't make enough.
Yeah, yeah, but you have to look at the number of hours that they worked, because that's the ratio, with the hours that they worked compared to the premium sum. So the more hours you work, the lower.
Just seems lopsided.
Well, it's supposed to be, that's supposed to be the.
Not that lopsided.
The lower paid are supposed to get more.
Yeah, that's how they established their equation.
So if you look at Alice, for example.
Who's Alice?
Alice Pritchard, she cleaned the bathrooms.
The contractor?
No, no, she was employee.
She has to be an employee to receive it.
She what?
She's an employee, you have to be an employee to receive it, you can't be a contractor.
So her two thousand dollars, based on, on, uh, the hours that she worked, worked out to be two dollars a year.
She had the highest level of exposure as well, too, right?
Probably, yeah.
Oh, yeah, for sure, anybody that claims.
Well, those are the police officers.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause they think it's people's fix. I smell alcohol.
So, the two thousand dollars is the, uh, figure that you came up with?
Yeah, I think it's, it's in the numbers, that's where he sits.
Yep.
Two things, he, um, he's a seasonal, he's a seasonal worker, and, um, and he knows he needs to keep his plug time in the well, he was, uh, so he does that premium unemployment. Just throwing the numbers out there, I felt like this was probably pretty fair.
Okay, before we do it, since we're, all, everybody else was a full-time employee, are there, Doug, any other seasonal people that are gonna pop up? Cause that's what I feel like we're doing.
Yeah, I, I think it's, uh, black more, you know, anymore, so.
I don't know, Doug.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that.
Are you in agreement with this?
Yeah.
I mean, he was here during, by the criteria you said.
I, I'm not saying he shouldn't get any money, I was just talking about the amendment.
Yeah, that's, he's right in line with everybody else.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay, you, you came up with a number of two thousand dollars, is there a motion to?
About fifteen hundred.
We're going to change it if that's.
I kind of feel uncomfortable with the two thousand cents, he was just seasonal, I think if we cut it down.
And the number of hours, twelve hundred hours.
Yeah, yeah. I, I feel better. Give him a little bit less.
Because that's going to bring him more into line with, uh, others.
Yeah. You know, um, that's my opinion, I mean, I would feel more comfortable with a little bit less since he wasn't seasonal, not full-time.
So there's a, maybe fifteen hundred, you said?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Bobby makes that motion, is there support for fifteen hundred dollars?
I support.
Jan supports, all in favor?
That brings him down to eighty, just, just a discussion, that brings him down to eighty-two cents by doing that.
Oh, that's true, that's true.
Well.
What's a dollar, you have?
Fifteen hundred.
No, thanks for catching that.
But no, that's still higher than police officer, police officers.
Yeah.
I think that's, I think it's fair.
Yeah, I think it's fair, being it's a seasonal and all that.
Yeah, Doug was trying, okay.
All right, there's a, there's a, and Jan supports, all, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay, fifteen hundred dollars for that, okay.
And then the second.
And then the second.
Second page is the election markers, again, you talked about the election markers last time, so I did the same thing. Um, you can see the number of hours, so there's total, there's, uh, fourth column over is total hours, the column over is total hours that they, um, worked. So the first group was the, um, election, the twenty twenty-one special election, the bottom group, it was the, uh, twenty twenty elections, so March of twenty twenty, again, through twenty twenty-one, I captured all of them. I, this one I kind of struggled with, I, I mean, somebody threw out at the last meeting fifty dollars, uh, number, so I put that in there and then actually, you know, when you look at their hourly rate, at fifty dollars versus the hours, there, they range anywhere from, you know, three dollars and some change up to six dollars an hour. Um, for the top group and then the bottom group, it's, it's in the.
Well, are you comfortable with it? You're around the election.
I would, so would she. I'm not getting paid.
Understand, but are you comfortable with the fifty?
I, I'm comfortable with it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's one day, you know, and some of them did it numerous times, but it's still one day and, you know, it.
And the rate of exposure is high.
The rate of exposure was high and, and I tell you, the first time that, uh, we did the election was at the peak of the COVID, when everybody was scared to death to even look at anybody in the eye, and that was, that was traumatic a little bit. But we got through it and, and, you know, we, we did it and, and I'm glad we did it, but I'm just saying, there was some trauma a little bit. But, I mean, it didn't, I think fifty dollars would be fair per, per each time they did it type of thing, so that's good.
Yeah, so they'll see, they'll see the names are due.
Yep.
Right, they're due some of it, yes, yes.
Also, some people.
Didn't you get that?
Okay, fifty dollars, why here a bit of it?
If you just look at the totals, so from premium pay, uh, with these two additions, we're at twenty-five thousand, that we paid out the first round, which is hopefully the officers. Um, and then, uh, another seven hundred for the election workers who are twenty-five thousand.
What was the limit, thirty-five percent?
No, there was a thirteen dollar wage cap.
Okay, good.
So.
You mean premium cap?
The premium cap, yeah, so you couldn't pay them or the, yeah, we're well under.
So we're well under, we're well under.
Mike, can I ask, um, before we decide on the fifty dollars thing, can I ask Vicki Law, she's, she was on there, how she feels about that?
Well, don't put her on the spot.
Can I ask you how you feel about that? Would you think that that was, um, um, adequate compensation for working with the.
Most people don't do it for the money, so I think, I, I really don't have anything really much to offer on that respect.
Okay, well, okay, because.
Talks like a firefighter.
She does.
She run her feet front of us.
I mean, I'm not saying that I'm, I'm mind that we get the dollar so much, you know, per hour, you know, I didn't throw away. But as far as being compensated because we did it under duress, I mean, it was fully masked.
It was from Adam, yeah.
But.
It was still a risk.
But that was still, but still, I, whatever you guys decide, I'm perfectly fine.
We just want to, what we'd like to do is just recognize the people that went above and beyond during that time and did their public service, that we recognize what they did and, and respect that and appreciate it, and that's what this is about, I think, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yep.
Whatever the board decides, in my opinion, there's a lot of other motivation.
We have fifty dollars on the table, is there support for that? Or is there, oh, that's, the motion, the motion is made by Jan, is there support? Bobby supports, all in favor?
Aye.
You're a hundred dollars richer.
Okay, Robert?
Okay, so, I hate doing this last minute, I apologize in advance, this just came in late this afternoon from the MTA. The guidance is out on the street for FY twenty-three earmarks. We have until the eighteenth of April to apply for FY twenty-three earmarks. Congress only has until the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth to submit them to the committees. So there are two things that I've found so far. It's possible that we could fund some DDA projects and Anna Swab is checking on the possibility of applying for an earmark, uh, for the poles, the utility lines. Because it, in the congressional guidance, it was very nebulous. So she's going to be going to Washington tomorrow, she would let me know by the end of the week, that's number one. Number two, um, I, I just kind of put this for your reading later on the sewer business. This is the actual congressional guidance, but I consolidated it into one page and I'll read it. It, the guidance from Congress, wastewater treatment plans, including sludge handling facilities, upgraded increase in treatment levels or expanded increase in treatment capacity, that's important, including blah, 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 blah. So I remember, you know, we were all concerned about Burt Lake State Park and that one, uh, blip. And we had a, uh, Meat and Hunt give us an estimate for seven hundred ninety-four thousand dollars, uh, to handle something like that. But that didn't include burying it plus inflation, so that alone, if we did that, would be well over a million dollars. And then all along, I've been talking with, uh, our operator about some of the things she would like to have, and that's on this list. Um, equipment, we don't even have a truck, if we got, uh, generators, we don't even have a truck to pull them in. Uh, we don't have a place to store the truck, we don't have a place to store the extra parts that she needs. And then the other issue that has come up, we have an alarm system on only two of our pumps. And what we really need, uh, especially when we go into phase one and phase two, uh, is an alarm system on every single pump. And the technology now has substantially increased and the costs are lower, where we literally could put a, um, a, what do you call it, a guard dog?
Guard dog.
A guard dog on every single pump.
As a private G alarm.
It's going to reduce, if, if we were to get something like that, it would reduce our liability if there's ever a backup and it would save labor costs, because if we get into phase one and phase two, our labor costs are going to skyrocket. We don't want to spend money, uh, people driving around looking at the red and blue lights.
And you're, you're, you're requesting that we, for, for permission or board approval to apply, right?
For, for Janet and I to look into applying, and you.
Yeah.
Because you're going to have to help me with, if, if we're able to get the, uh, the poles.
Utilities, yeah.
But, you know, it's a very short suspense, I don't know that we can make it, but I don't want to do anything without board.
So, it's saying, this is always going to be my question, matching funds, as a grant?
It depends on the program.
Okay, so we, we can look at this, you can put the application in, if it comes back that we can't, you know, it's not going to work with matching funds, we don't have to, we're not obligated.
Like the three point five million dollar earmark we got, is, uh, I think it's twenty percent matching, but we can use other funds.
To match.
And it's waiverable.
So, but that's, we apply, we worry about those things, we're not obligated.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We always say no, that's what I'm saying, we can always say no.
Perfect, that's the question, it's with that, because I always worry about.
Is there a motion to board group, for board approval to make the application?
I think Bob made the motion.
Bob made the motion, is there support?
I support.
Jan supports, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold?
Aye.
Bury those poles.
Bury those poles.
All right.
Okay, uh, the last item is, uh, board approval to proceed to circuit court. Uh, Gordon, can you kind of explain that real quick?
So, um, we've been dealing with a blight issue, it's the caravan motel. And I had actually learned today that because we've issued three citations and he goes, the individual goes up and actually pleads guilty and then pays his fines, but doesn't clean up the mess. So because he pled guilty in district court, I need board approval for the attorney to take it to circuit court. Does that make sense?
To make him clean up the mess.
To make him.
Make him clean up the mess.
So all I'm asking for is to get it out of district court into circuit court.
Are we going to make him clean up the mess or are we going to hire somebody to clean it?
Well, that's going to be the judge, when it hits before Judge Goethe, or what he's going to decide to do, he might give him, I'll give you thirty days to get this all brought into compliance or else.
Yeah, he, we're just, we're filing for injunctive relief.
Correct.
That's all, so, but why do we have to, he'll come up with something.
Same, same thing we're doing with Northland Sports.
Yep.
Now, the only difference is, is because Northland Sports didn't answer to any of the citations written, the attorney was able to, because he didn't do anything in district court, he was able to just go ahead and take it to circuit court.
And we got a default and now he's challenging the default on April twenty-fifth.
Correct.
Okay, is there any more questions for Gordon?
I just need a motion.
Sure. Motion to, uh.
I'll make that motion.
Bobby makes that motion, we all understand what it is, let's repeat that with the vote, just, uh, for, or our attorney, Kirk and Huth, and to take, uh, to go to circuit court with, uh, file, file in circuit court against the caravan.
Uh, for blight issue.
For blight issue. Is that close?
Yes.
Is there support?
I'll support that.
Bobby supports, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief, public comment, public comment? Yes, sir?
Really, just a clarification, where is the link for the bridge going to be posted and when?
Uh, uh, I will get it to Bob tonight, it'll be on, he'll put it on the website.
We're at, on the website.
Uh, latest news and public notice.
Thank you.
Yep, public comment?
On, real quick, um, I would once again ask that the office hours be expanded to include Fridays until at least four or five o'clock. I conducted some business at the window the other day, I met your new admin, had no idea what her name is. I would suggest that you bring her to a meeting and introduce her to the public. As far as the Easter egg hunt coming up on the sixteenth, I always thought that that was a Parks Commission thing and I just come to find out that it's actually for families that started that tradition ages ago, Jennifer Andrew and three other people. Um, I wasn't aware of that, so Kowana's kicked in some money this year to, uh, pay for more candy and pay for some more funds. And, uh, I don't know if you noticed, he snapped, snuck in unannounced, but our county commissioner, Mr. Wallace, is with us, who's also the board chair. And if anybody wants to beat up the county about anything. He's the guy.
Thank you, Mr. Oldwall, any more public comment? Any more rebuttals, Commissioner Wallace?
Uh, defense. I just want to draw your attention, one of the things the commissioners do, sure, they have two meetings a, uh, a month, the second and the fourth Tuesday at nine thirty, but we also go to about, each commissioner has about ten different committees, commissions or boards they sit on in the whole north here, about the, about the north, from Grilling North. We all sit on different boards and we have to attend each meeting. One of the meetings I sit on is NMRE, Northern Michigan Regional Entity, which is a piece of community mental health, which is the board that allocates some money for education, treatment and prevention of substance abuse. I want to let you know that meth, amphetamine is now tied with heroin as to one of the most abused drugs. The, the other fifty percent, there's, in that group, there's several other drugs like psychedelic mushrooms and all those other jazz things and marijuana, but alcohol is still fifty percent of what most of our substance abuse is in this northern tip of the lower peninsula. So it's a serious situation. Piggybacking that, I want to let you know, we've all, we've, for many years, we've had the Williams House in Chilwell, which is a halfway house for men in treatment. Now, we're going to have a women's house. We have a group coming in to form a women's, woman's house, halfway house up in Chilwell. They'll be involved in drug and alcohol treatment. FYI.
Thank you, that's special, thank you. Hey, any more public comment? Okay, board comment? Yes, Bobby?
Um, we forget, people are forgetting to mention things tonight and this wasn't on the agenda, but we put out sewer bills again. It was quarterly time for sewer bills and the rate of inflation went on there.
Okay.
Was eighty-eight cents in REU, so, just so that.
Eighty-eight cents.
We usually just announce that, it's, it's part of the resolution, part of the sewer resolution, but we do, um, normally, I think, announce that in the meeting so that people know what it was. It was eighty-eight cents in REU, so that should have been mentioned.
Board comment?
So the other thing we forgot to talk about is when we, oh, sorry. When we, um, consolidated the accounts, got rid of the IMA, um, and opened the, uh, pool checking account, that was one of the things that we had said we were going to do in order, um, uh, to fix some of the problems we were having with the audit. So that's like one check mark, um, that we got taken care of.
More comments? Okay, no more comments, motion to adjourn? Congratulations to the sewer committee and the church people.
Yay!
Good job, good job.